We might have to reconvene outside because it might be warmer out there. So I'll make a motion to reconvene in open session at 7 o'clock. Is there a second? Dr. McGee, go first.
Chairman Borje.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kudyszkis.
I'll make a motion to see the closed session minutes of the December 18, 2019 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, go first.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kudyszkis.
Would you please stand and join me for a moment of silence?
The chair pledge.
Dr. McGee, go first.
Chairman Borje.
Here.
Vice Chair Burke.
Here.
Mrs. Capwell.
Here.
Mrs. Nato.
Here.
Mrs. Kudyszkis.
Now we report the votes taken in closed session. First, the committee on a 5 to 0 vote upheld agreements to end the employment of an 1137 employee. And second, we approve the settlement agreement with an employee on a vote of 3 to 2. Next, we're going to the welfare. I understand we have Villanova here, Villanova Middle School. I turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Very excited to be here. Thank you for having us. This evening, we have a little slideshow presentation for you. And then my student leadership team is going to give you a view of a day in the life of a middle schooler at Villanova. But before we're waiting for the screen to come down and the video to get ready, let it roll, I just have to say thank you to Mrs. Barandola and Mrs. Marks, who volunteered their time to our student leadership team. So we're very, very grateful to them. Okay, one applause just for them. You want to check the video?
Hi, my name is Kristen Hiller. I'm a seventh grade Villanova student who's on leadership team. And the topic I'm talking about is the schedule of a middle school. This is a new schedule that we're implementing this year. It was different from last year. And we start around each day with an advisory. Advisory is the first and last 10 minutes of our day. Where we go to remember teachers in class to either prepare for our classes that day or to pack up the roll. And the next period is S D L. S D L stands for self-directed learning. That's the period where students will do their own learning with the help of guidance of their teachers. And then we have an A day and a B day. So on an A day, and this is different from last year, on an A day, we have one period of S D L and two or about four core classes for an hour and a half each. I was counting all four core classes for 45 minutes. And then on the B day, we have two periods of S D L with the other two classes that we didn't have on Monday that were an hour and a half. And during S D L, we set goals for ourselves that we have to keep ourselves accountable for. And we have an acronym for that, too. It's called SMART goals. S M A R T, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and time-bound goals. And that's our day.
Hi, my name is Montse Lee. I'm a fifth grade Villanova middle school. I'm also a special assistant counselor. Today I'll be talking about I X Pro, the I X Pro program. We have I X Pro courses for them. They all talk about careers and different pathways that we take for our career. I'm talking about I X Pro because that is the I X Pro department. There's one class we taught about web design and we also created websites. But before we created our websites, we worked on what a web designer does. If you didn't know, a web designer creates websites for companies. They also create the code for websites. The class after our web design, we created our website. We went to Google Sites and created our website. It could be about any topic. We had two pages and they're all divided into three different sections. We had a picture and a description of that picture or the topic that we're talking about. My topic is about restaurants. I have many different facts about each restaurant, such as the location, who we specify, and the many locations around the circle. If you do want to check our website, you can find it at sites.google.com/monstroschools.com/gastrestaurants.
Hi, my name is Vero Canales. I'm a sixth grader at Villanova Middle School. Today I will be talking about how I got into student leadership. My home teacher did an internship and I got the votes for all the candidates and that's how I got in. Now I'm going to talk about I am a silverware. We have deals that really, we'll talk about anti-bullying and social acceptance and dress. And most importantly, for us, the wishes to be vocal and that's what we're saying. And I'm going to talk about school spirit. School spirit, which is on a gem day, twin day, holiday, and then we did a colored day. And then the other one, that's the one that's red. That is what's at this day, but that's not the story. And then we met up with Dr. McGee to talk about math and our other younger books and about write tests. And he said improve the math books and our minds to like help us do the test. And that's all I got to say.
Hi, my name is Leoni Sajad. I am a seventh grade and I attend Villanova Middle School. My topic will be about anti-bullying and the ways that we raise awareness in our school. First off, we've had class-to-class presentations, also known as the I Am A Person project. This is when Mr. Deere and a group of students walk around and talk about their experiences with bullying. Another one is the nature extraordinary that happened very recently. It was on December 7. And as some pictures in the video show, we decorate a tree that represented different things like unity and diversity. Some of the decorations included the book ornament, the hen onions. And the last thing that I want to talk about is the unity day that we had this year. It was in October 3. We had students dress up in orange to raise the awareness for bullying. And an assembly was also held where we listened to Mr. Deere speak about different things like bullying and how people get bullied and why we shouldn't do it and how we can stay it forever. And that's it for today for me.
Hi, I'm Angela Martin. I'm also at Villanova. I'm a seventh grade student as well. The topic I'm going to be talking about is our P B I S point system. P B I S work acronym standing for Positive Behavioral Interventional Support. P B I S provides a positive cultural development. Something that we do at P B I S is having every team at the beginning of the year make a bearing and present it to the whole school and make a fun or a complication out of it. Another thing that we do is have a assembly every month with the whole school in the gym. Where Mrs. Granado will amount which team has the most amount of points. Then the team that wins gets a reward. Do we raise points to somehow inspire and encourage students to behave? We can employ using plot, plot and whatever acronyms so we can be prepared, respectful, on task, and productive. We incorporate our core at all of our classes. Thank you for your time. Thank you. As you can see, this is why you're part of my leadership team. Leadership team. So also looking at the future junior achievement, not junior achievement, that's what we call a society part. So we hope you all have a great holiday. Our students get new treats to enjoy and have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you so much. Fellas, well done. Thank you so much. Is there anyone that would like to address the school committee? If you would like, please come to the podium. Say your name, address to the record, please. Hearing none, I, you can smell the incredible aroma coming from our incredible culinary students. I asked Chef Paul if he could do something for Christmas and my God, like Santa, he's come through. We're not going to get cold tonight. It's getting warmer in here, Mr. Notorianni, so that's fantastic. So why don't I'll entertain a motion to take a 10-minute recess while we sample all the goodies at the next table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go to recess. Great job. I'll make a motion to return from recess at 7:29 a.m. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, go first.
Chairman Borje.
Here, yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
No.
This whole up for you. Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Either, yes.
Mrs. Kudyszkis.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into recognitions and announcements. We have quite a few, so Dr. McGee.
Yes, I'm a bit sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to first thank the culinary students here from Sockeye Area Career and Technical Center, as well as Chef Paul. Chef Paul, their phenomenal instructor. This is, we're just so fortunate to have the culinary program at the Sockeye Area Career and Technical Center. And this is just one sampling of the delicacies that they serve really on a daily basis over there. So thank you again to Chef and to his wonderfully talented students. I also want to thank Mrs. Granado, who is here, for her incredible leadership and student leadership at Villanova Middle School. I've had the pleasure of knowing many of the students that were here this evening since they were in fourth grade. And I'll tell you, they were impressive as fourth graders and they're maturing and growing into very impressive middle school students. And that's the future of the Wunsoket Education Department. I think we're in really good hands. I did have the pleasure of attending one of their leadership meetings about a month or so ago. And they were correct. The topic was math and we talked about write tests. And it was a very lively, enriching conversation. I learned a lot. They didn't hold anything back. So they were, you know, they were just great. And we're just so fortunate to have kids like that here in our district and at Villanova Middle School. And I'm just so proud of them and what they do. So the Wunsoket Education Department's breakfast program recently received recognition on Channel 10's Health Check Kids Report. The report highlighted the SEDEXO Wunsoket breakfast programs, which are both innovative and versatile and meet the needs of the different schools within the district. One such breakfast program that we're utilizing here in Sockeye is called the Grab and Go, in which students can access breakfast from kiosks located within schools. Villanova Middle School and Middle School are two of the schools that are currently implementing that. The segment was aired on December 5th and is available to view online at the Channel 10 website. The Wunsoket Villanovans football team concluded their 2019 season by winning their second consecutive Division II state championship with a resounding 28 to 0 victory over Mount Pleasant High School. It was a roller coaster season as the Villanovans started out losing their first four games. However, riding a strong defense led by seniors Corey Brown and Hayden DePaul, they were able to weather the storm and win their last eight games. Shortly after winning the Super Bowl, they went on to win the first Thanksgiving Day football game in nine years by beating rival Cumberland High School 18 to 15. After the 2019 football season concluded, league coaches nominated 19 Wunsoket players for the All Academic Team and 10 players for the All Division Team. Congratulations to the Villanovans on a truly amazing season. The Wunsoket High School Holiday Concert was held on December 5. The music department started the evening off with the jazz band playing "Heart, the Herald Angels Sing", followed by the percussion ensemble, chorus, choir, and concert band. The amazing talents of these student musicians are indelible. Congratulations to both our students and teachers on a very joyful concert. The annual Wunsoket Smile Family Science Night was held on November 21st at Wunsoket High School. The evening started off with a delicious potluck dinner, followed by interactive presentations by elementary, middle, and high school students. Congratulations to our very creative and curious student scientists and mathematicians, as well as their hardworking teachers on a wonderful evening of stuff. Congratulations to Miss Chris Wright, Site Coordinator for the Connecting for Children and Families After School Program at Wunsoket High School, who was recently named the After School Director of the Year by the Rhode Island After School Network. She's been the coordinator of the After School Program at Wunsoket High School since 2011. Funding for the program comes from federal 21st Century Learning Grants, which are supervised by CCF. As part of the grant requirements, these programs are designed to teach skills to students who can use them later in life. Working with a team of three others, Chris oversees several after-school clubs and activities offered by CCF in partnership with Wunsoket High School. These include everything from a school newspaper to a video game design club to science clubs and a creative writing class. The program serves between 100 and 150 students daily. Wunsoket High School students can sign up for individual clubs and programs or drop into the library for an after-school help three days a week. This right was one of five individuals honored during the Lights On After School Summit at the Crown Plaza Hotel in late October. As part of the award, she received a $1,000 mini-grant to support supplies and stipends for the CCF program. Congratulations to Miss Wright for this outstanding award. Wunsoket Middle School Band and Chorus Holiday Concert was held on December 11. Concert included winter-themed selections. Wonderful students and their teachers worked tirelessly to prepare music for their winter concert and look forward to their spring concert. Congratulations to the student musicians and their teachers on a great night. Congratulations to Wunsoket High School senior Holly Vipicom on receiving the 2020 Herbert E. Kaplan Youth in Philanthropy Scholarship Award. The Kaplan Youth in Philanthropy Scholarship was available to a student graduating from a Rhode Island High School in June 2020, who has demonstrated a history of philanthropy and volunteerism. Holly has a very long and impressive resume at Wunsoket High School. She's been the class president for the past three years. She's dedicated her time to helping her school, peers, and the community alike. She's taken a leadership role in many activities, including organizing community chaperones and donations for her school's junior prom, serving as a student liaison on the school's XQ Foundation Planning Grant, and serving as a peer mentor for incoming freshman students. It's truly an honor to call Holly of Villanova. This past week, CBS Health donated seven iPad ears with brand-new protective cases to the Wunsoket Education Department. On behalf of the district, I'd like to take this opportunity and thank CBS for their generous donation and for always being kind and generous to the students and staff of the Wunsoket Education Department. And lastly, I'd like to wish everyone in the Wunsoket Education Department and the Wunsoket community a very healthy, happy, and restful holiday season. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I want to add my congratulations to Mrs. Wright. And I also want to add my congratulations to our football team, who were phenomenal, especially when this season began. So congratulations to the coaches and to our student athletes. And I can say that the Wunsoket Middle School Holiday Concert was really an incredible event. The Wunsoket High auditorium was packed and Mrs. Kudyszkis and I attended that concert, which was really incredible. The chorus sang beautifully and the band orchestra really played well. So it was a lot of fun to be there and I'd like to look forward to the spring concert. Anyone else who would like to make any mentions to the guiding recognition of the concert? If not, I'll, oh, my chair.
Yeah, well briefly.
Yeah, sure.
We can comment on the Wunsoket High School concert.
Yes.
Which was so exciting. Mrs. Kudyszkis, Mrs. Capwell, myself, and Dr. McGee. We were there and as always, Mr. DiTos and Mrs. Alves, they put on a great show. And I write to them almost every year to say, you know, thank you. And also, I appreciate the diversity of the selections that they present. It's really so creative, like the party. So we also enjoyed the high school concert, too.
Wonderful. I'm glad you did.
And Mrs. Capwell.
And I will, yeah, and I'll add my own two cents on that as well. As much as I absolutely loved the selection and the talent, what I truly appreciated was seeing how much the students appreciate their teachers and their mentors, whether it just be standing up and gift giving, you can see that they make a true impact and that that student body absolutely appreciates the work.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. I too enjoyed the high school concert before that because I'm probably getting that wrong. What's an iPad? iPad here. I'll express my thoughts. I have no idea what that is.
Mrs. Kudyszkis, you bring my dog and get that. Thank you.
Does that work?
Oh, yes. Much better.
Can you tell me what an iPad, can someone tell me what an iPad is?
I'm going to try. I'm going to, I'm just saying it's, it's a. It's, Mr. Toriani is looking over here at me like I don't really know what I'm going to be talking about. But I love to know, so I may be deferring to Mr. Toriani. An iPad, I would imagine that it's a newer edition iPad.
Wow, that's all he's got?
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Maybe so, tell me.
Woman out now, actually. I'm going to defer to my colleagues.
There you go.
Yeah, no, it's, it's another generation iPad yet, just.
Thank you.
Just another way for them to use the same device and like they can beat the camera and make you $8,000 or more.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. I'll make a motion, receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll look at approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the November 20th, 2019 opening session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections, deletions, adjustments? If not, Dr. McGee, go first.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kudyszkis.
Yes.
Next, we'll go into the consented gender and I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consented gender. Is there a second?
Second.
I would like to look at the personal actions, the personal actions. What is, my question is, what is an induction coach? It seems like we have quite a few, right? Listed, I have no idea what that is. Who is going to help me understand that? Is that Mr. Notorianni or Dr. Holt?
Nope, that would mean. So an induction coach is part of our new higher program. Induction coaches are veteran teachers in the district who we've identified who have certain expertise in their classrooms and are able to model instruction to our new teachers and to work alongside our brand-new teachers as they come into the profession. We have 10 across the district.
Right, so is this, is this a new salary position or is this?
No, these have been here in our title funding for a few years. They're not new.
But Chairman, don't, um, don't we also have a mentoring program?
We do, yes. So we have.
Is this the same thing?
Yep, there are two parts to our induction, our new higher program. We have induction coaches and new mentor teachers. Induction coaches work with teachers who are brand-new to the profession. And our new teacher mentors work with teachers who've come to us with experience outside of our district. So we're helping them to Wunsoketize their experience here.
Anyone else want to take anything on or go to the consented gentleman? Vice Chair Burke?
Oh. Oh, sorry.
Oh, okay. Go, go, go. Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borje.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kudyszkis.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Dr. McGee. Why don't you give us your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have two items on my report. First is an update on the graduation rate. We just received the preliminary calculations of cohort rates for our high school graduates. This would be the students who graduated last year. And the preliminary calculations are 77.7 or 78% graduation rate, which is up from last year's rate of 73%.
which is up by 20 percentage points from 2014's 58%. So, as we look at our graduation rate from year to year, with the exception of, we had one year where we went down a little bit, but we really shown a very nice and steady progression over the last five years, six years. And I attest that to a variety of things, and we talked about this. One is we're much better with our data collection, and the data in which we provide to the Department of Education, so the calculation is made correctly. We've also done a nice job of providing our high school students specifically in the ninth grade with our Success 101 program, which personalized their experience. That program is in its, gosh, it's in its fourth or fifth year. And we also have done a nice job of establishing, three, two and a half years ago, I guess, the PM Night School for students who are older and don't have enough credits, where if they were, if they remained in the traditional high school setting, they probably would not graduate from high school. So, those are really sort of the three key areas that I've seen in terms of, you know, the last four years that I think has really played a very important role in our improved graduation rate. So, you know, like I say every year, being in the seventies is not where I want to be, but I'm also very, very proud of the work that our district is doing and that the high school is doing to continuously improve our graduation rate. And, you know, the goal is to hit 80%, and I think we're certainly well on our way. So, I welcome any questions the committee has.
Anyone? Any thoughts?
The second agenda item is an update on our elementary truancy court. The last time I spoke with the committee was prior to the start of the elementary truancy court, which was in November. And at the time, the committee had asked me if I would just present a brief update on how things are going. So, I did have a conversation with Roger Pickard, Senator Pickard, who is one of our two district attendance officers. And he has indicated to me that there has been, so far, two sessions with the magistrate. One of the most recent was in November. We have, in the month of November, there were four cases across our elementary schools. And if you recall at the last meeting, I talked about what we were gonna use in terms of a cutoff for what grades and the number of absences. And the number of absences is sort of based on each school's and the number of students in grades K-1 and 2, which is where we're primarily focusing on. So, it varies from school to school with respect to the number of absences. But it would be families who either Mr. Pickard, the building administrator, the building social workers or counselors have already reached out to families or trying to provide support to them. This is kind of the next step in that process. In January, which is the next scheduled session with magistrate Paulus, we are going to be adding eight more cases. And then in February, they are anticipating that they're gonna be adding about 12 more cases. So, by February, we would have reached approximately 25 cases, which was about the number. We're looking to go between 20 and 25 cases each year. So, we'll have met that by February. Anecdotally, Mr. Pickard has said that those students and families that are currently in truancy court, they have seen already improvement in their attendance, which is what this is all about, to provide supports to families and assistance so that their children do start coming to school regularly. So, I'm very excited about the preliminary information that I've received from Mr. Pickard. And, you know, as we move through the remainder of the year, probably maybe sometime in the spring, I'll come back to the committee with even more information and more data from this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any comments, questions about superintendent? Not? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports. We'll start with the policy subcommittee. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Kaviskas.
It's a pleasure. We haven't had the full policy subcommittee meetings since our last one, but we did have a meeting at the high school in November to several members to release some materials from the council. It's called Sarah Ford, Carolyn, people, as to issues that we feel need to be addressed, that they feel need to be fully addressed. We met for about two hours, and we discussed issues around our latter Title IX policy, that the policy that we don't count a specific Title IX policy, and our anti-harassment policy, anti-discrimination policies are believed to be not sufficient. We're also looking at reviewing our disciplinary policy in conjunction with that, as well as our student exclusion policy in conjunction with Title IX and anti-discrimination and harassment policies. We're also gonna be looking at our threat assessment policy as a result of legislation that's introduced in the state of General Assembly. It requires us to have a threat assessment team. We have process teams. We're gonna build off that to develop a threat assessment team. The policy subcommittee is developing a threat assessment policy to address those issues as well. And this is also gonna be review of our tenth policy, which will allow for our content filter policy. Mr. Schuster is with the ECLU as to how our process works in terms of getting content approved to be unblocked in the school system. So, in particular, we're focusing on those policies, and in particular, the processes of how those policies can be developed. It's responsible for writing that. When they'll be given to the policy subcommittee members, it'll be hopefully well in advance of our meeting, at least the Friday before our next meeting. But our next meeting, as a result of this meeting, the policy subcommittee meeting on January 21st is going to be a little different than what we've been doing because we're gonna have, it's gonna be a pretty significant meeting. We're gonna be looking at home schooling policy, which we've been working on for a while, threat assessment policy, the student exclusion policy, proposed Title IX policy, proposed anti-harassment policy, and tenth content policy. We'll tap into these where we ask that the council have those policies to the membership by January 17th, which is Friday before our meeting on Tuesday, and give everyone a chance to review them, to have a meaningful discussion. So, I expect this meeting is gonna be a little bit heavier than some of our prior meetings. But we wanted, I discussed it with the chair briefly, and wanted us to bring to the attention of the entire school committee that these issues were gonna be worked on in policy. Hopefully, voted out of the policy subcommittee. So, we'll reach in our agenda sooner rather than later. That's essentially it.
I think it's important for the policies to go to the subcommittee as soon as possible because they should be coming up to us for voting. And I guess Sarah is here to come. We'll be writing the policies, drafting them for the subcommittee to review, and then which will then come to the whole body of the school committee.
Right. It'll go to the subcommittee first, and then it'll work on to you.
Well, it's very important because it's been a while since we've seen the policies. And I was wondering, my discussion with Mrs. Kaviskas was, well, we don't have them in front of us. So, they definitely gotta have them at least a weekend before the meeting because if they get them on the day of the meeting, that's worthless because they can't react here. But excellent. That's good. Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the policy subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Technology Subcommittee, Mrs. Capwell and Vice Chair Burk. If you notice, I didn't say to Mrs. Kaviskas, but give me time, and I'll make my...
I told you. I think it's a compliment. So, the technology subcommittee met on Tuesday, December 10th at 6:00 p.m. in the building. The attendants were Al and Toriani, Brad, Perrier, Jessica, Donato, Heather Neal, Mark Barrow, Phil Webb, Dr. Angel, LaSalle. As I go through some of the topics as I spoke to them in our last meeting, we'll see somewhat redundant because of a lot of our agenda items covered the previous topics. Hopefully, we have updates as to progress throughout. Probably the biggest topic at our subcommittee meeting...
Mrs. Capwell, would you please bring your mic down? We can't hear you.
Perfect. Oh, okay. Wow.
Bring it on.
There we go. Probably our biggest topic was the continuing conversations around our fleet of Chromebooks coming to end of play in 2021. So, the team is continuing their due diligence to present back to the committee a recommendation around how we're going to resolve this issue. Are we going to lease new equipment? Should we be buying them? Should it be a three-year lease, a five-year lease? And so, we anticipate that information to be forthcoming. From a timing perspective, we need to be making a decision around this in the spring of next year. And so, sometime around that point, that's gonna be brought forth to the committee to make a recommendation on. As far as upcoming and ongoing projects that Al and team have underway, last time we spoke around how our server closets are in need of some modification just due to the current environment. This may also be a crossover into the facilities subcommittee, knowing that one of our vendors, RGW, will be coming in to complete a survey of those closets, develop a recommended scope of work with pricing. This will then be added into our five-year capital plan, and we'll need some approvals going forth from that. Our security cameras are still on the radar, or as they're failing, Al and team are making those one-for-one swaps. And the key fob access to be used throughout the district, where every school is currently using a different key fob system, that process is still underway before they update to the team as time goes on. And then, the last time we spoke, we talked about record-keeping in forms and utilizing some new software for document holding. When I reported the last time, the effort is going to be initiated to upload IEPs. Since that time, the plan has changed, and I think appropriately so. We're gonna actually have an upload of the 504s. It's a smaller scope. It'll give the opportunity to test out the new software, make sure that it's where we're working out any things prior to going after that larger document repository and scanning of the IEPs. As part of that conversation, there is also the recognition that we need to be mindful of cybersecurity. So, that will be an ongoing topic that needs to be addressed, not knowing if everybody is familiar with some of the recent issues that districts in Rhode Island have had. And then also, you know, if you're looking at the news, New Orleans is under a state emergency due to cybersecurity issues. So, now that we will be seeing ourselves moving towards utilizing this software and uploading our documents, we need to be concerned with that. So, that will be an ongoing topic of discussion as well. That's it.
Just a couple of just comments, questions. The Chromebooks that we're looking to upgrade, change, whatever, will that fit? Next year's budget, Mr. Perrier? Do you think that's gonna be an expense that we're gonna have to deal with for this coming year?
In next year's budget, yeah. I think that will be something that we're gonna need to talk about.
And is this a replacement of all Chromebooks? Or is this staggered by school, or by grade? How do we know which ones are keeping, which ones not?
Sort of a staggered will be addressed in the elementary schools first. The community calls, some of them are in the community, they're calling, implementing Chromebook initiative at the elementary level first, and then we phase in the middle school and high school. So, we'll be getting a phased-in approach. At some point, we'll be matching everything else, so it's on the same upgrade schedule because without getting into too much detail, we did discuss that the last subcommittee or the previous one. The Chromebooks, when they were purchased, were purchased in such a way that eventually we would match it all up. So, I'm trying to avoid the staggered approach. I'm trying to look towards leasing, just to get fixed panels, just prepared to get to the benefits that we're into detail. But we purchased the Chromebooks based on year of manufacture. So, the Chromebooks that we purchased at the elementary level and high school level bought them. So, when they weren't new, they may have already been a year old in storage at the facility when we purchased them, rather than buying brand new, where it's off the manufacturing line. And that was purposely done and coordinated effort to make sure at some point that everything matched up and we were upgrading all at the same time. So, over the next couple of years, you're gonna see that phase in. It will be a complete or upgrade every so often versus a hodgepodge approach that's really unwieldy in terms of finances.
I think you'll do a much more consistent look, or it'll be much more consistent with a lease. You're gonna have a fixed cost every year. It probably might cost a few more dollars overall. Again, we haven't finished writing the numbers, but you won't have these fights where we do, where you try to buy billion-dollar computers one year to get things caught up and, you know, go on to that.
In terms of cybersecurity, you may have mentioned that have we begun a process of reviewing where we stand to hopefully avoid the ransomware issues like New Orleans and East Greenwich have suffered at this point?
Yes. So, we've discussed the cybersecurity and the cyber threats and what we're doing. So, just briefly, we are in the process of reviewing. We have backup protocols in place. We've had them in place for many years here in the district. Most of our financial software is hosted offsite, backed up regularly through the vendors. It's not something they're supposed to host in site, on-site, which a lot of these situations we were hearing about in the newspaper and the news are because these individual organizations are hosting their data and making insight on this server. They're responsible for the backups, and they're responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of the servers and whatnot. Here in Wensocket, and this is prior to my tenure here, both our student information system and our financial management system, which was very important to the district, are both hosted, what's called in the cloud, meaning that they're hosted offsite with a particular vendor. They're responsible for making backups. So, if we were to be attacked under the initial approach, is once we get internet restored here in the district, we can then reconnect that up to our software where our data is located, and we can resume business as quickly as we can get the internet up and running versus an organization or another municipality here in the state or across the country, where if they're hosting it inside, inside in the district, basically if their server was down, it was down till we could fix this server. We're in a unique situation where we've been proactive. Again, years ago, we were proactive in some of our purchases, and that's enabled us to be in better shape than some of the other municipalities. But we are conducting a review, which is always a good idea to be vigilant in terms of what's going on in terms of technology. And we are reviewing our processes. We'll be in contact. We'll go through a checklist that was, you know, the chairman forward on with your meeting you had with the state police and the Rhode Island National Guard. And we're going through a checklist they distributed in the presentation. Once we've completed our self-assessment, we'll be in contact with them to invite them in to do an assessment on our systems here. And hopefully, if they don't pick up any, but if they do, we'll pick up any vulnerabilities that we can then address or, you know, take care of it.
I think one of the more frightening aspects of that day that I attended the meeting with the school committee chairman and with the state police, the National Guard, FBI, and online security gave presentations about cybersecurity and ransomware, they said, "Those of you who have us backing your files and saving files on the cloud, you think it'd be safe?" That's not the case. That was, I thought, the scariest thought that they gave us because they had seen and witnessed situations where the cloud didn't protect. So, I'm glad that we took our own assessment ahead of this review, and I look forward to seeing what they think, especially when they're looking at, "The last thing we would ever want is all of a sudden we've got ransomware on our computers, and now we're paying ridiculous prices to get our files. And in one case, at least one, the payment was made to these crooks, and the files were not released." So, that community lost all their files. So, that is frightening. It's worth it to be doing the work of the union to make sure. Any other thoughts? Make a motion to receive and place on file the technology subcommittee report. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the facilities subcommittee report. Mrs. Nato and I attended the facilities subcommittee, and I'm gonna turn this over to our director, just to give us the highlights of that meeting.
So, the facilities subcommittee, this can be on Tuesday, December 3rd, at 11:00 a.m. in the conference room.
Some of the topics that were discussed were the facilities, were the high school hallway heating units, where they're presently under review. Those are some of the oldest heating units here in the district. We have a failure of a couple of units in the last couple of months. So, those are currently being reviewed by one of our outside vendors. And they'll be getting some recommendations as to whether or not they can be easily repaired, if it's a moderate expense, or whether or not something needs to be put to our five-year capital plan. We also discussed the closing out of the windows. We'll Savoy Window Project and Boiler Project. That project will be substantially completed. It's completed, but what RIDE defines as substantially completed and closed out by the end of this month, the end of January, I believe, is correct, Perrier. So, that project is pretty much wrapping up. We discussed briefly the trust, the Rhode Island Trust parking lot review. The Rhode Island Trust, our insurance carrier, reviewed all of our parking lots and crosswalks and sidewalks to make sure that there were no safety issues. The review was forwarded to us, and we're using that plan to address any minor repairs that we can do in-house. And again, anything major will be sent out to the five-year capital plan. We briefly talked about summer 2020 projects, drainage at the Gold Year Elementary School, at Harris Elementary School, and the playground, new playgrounds for Leo Savoy and Gold Year Citizens Campus. We talked about the steps that are underway and future steps we need to undertake with RIDE, with regard to the five-year capital plan. We outlined the timeline. And we'll have our initial application for February. And a second or stage-two application will be submitted in September. We discussed the district risk assessment legislation, which Mrs. Capescus indicated will be going to the policy subcommittee for review, having a policy as required by the General Assembly. We talked about the crossing guard initiative. So, we are currently looking for crossing guards at our elementary schools to cross students in the mornings and the afternoons. We are entertaining a proposal by Sedexo to upgrade the pool cafeteria, the serving line area. That's a project we would like to initiate, get some proposals for, and get completed before June 30th through the current fiscal year. And finally, we briefly talked about the appeals process and the mileage policy regarding student transportation here in the district. And we felt the need that in the coming months, we'll be forwarding on some ideas to the policy subcommittee for review and modifications to the existing policy and to make a point.
Any questions, comments? I'll make the motion to receive and place on file the facilities subcommittee report. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll turn it over to Mr. Perrier for the financial update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you is the November 2019 fiscal update. A few of the financial highlights we can talk about here quickly. The time all revenues are scheduled to meet budget, other than Medicaid reimbursement. Woodsocket Education Department is currently awaiting the finalization of the insurance from the state that dollars paid directly to DCYF will be eligible for Medicaid reimbursement. I've got indications that this is in the works. What's happened this year is now for DCYF play students, we are now paying DCYF directly. We're no longer paying the out-of-district placement. So, there's been some hesitation, some conversation amongst the school districts that will this be eligible for Medicaid reimbursement. As these are very large expenses, we want to make sure that that is resolved before we continue paying. At this time, we have all of our requisitions in for DCYF, but I haven't released any payments yet. So, our fiscal projections do include this money, but we haven't released any of those dollars yet as part of the requisitions. So, that's something that we're waiting, final word on from the state before we proceed with paying these who I have. On the expenditure side, right now, all salaries are projected to be $649,000 under budget at this time across all salary lines. When then, with the $836K employee turnover allowance, the district is $187K over budget on salaries, which is pretty close to the $44 million budget there. At this time, all employee contracts have been approved by the school committee. The date have been covered in the system. And there are no FY '19 salary expenditures being booked in FY '20. Everything is in its proper fiscal year. Anticipated employee turnovers throughout the year should help bring these numbers back into balance by the time the end of the year rolls around. Our medical expenses are currently $1.3 million under budget. We did have a slight pickup over the last time we did this, but this number has been pretty steady, month over month, as I've been tracking it this year. Again, this is still pretty early. We're through November, but I think we're getting to the point where we can get a little more comfortable with this number. Again, barring anything crazy happening, which it's happened before. But it's something that we can get a little more comfortable with, that we are going to have a surplus on that line. And we'll continue to monitor it going forward. Currently, the Woodsocket Education Department is running $69,000 under budget for HVAC repairs. We've actually started dipping in this number a little bit. We did increase it quite a bit last year, or quite a bit for this fiscal year. But we're still under budget. Hopefully, we'll continue to be under budget. But it has trended up about $150,000 over the last time we did a fiscal update. Transportation is currently projected to be $195,000 over budget. And we've had some conversations about that. That is due to the increased costs through statewide transportation. Mr. Torriani and I have had some conversations about maybe possibly looking at some other options we have other than statewide. This is something that finance directors across the state have kind of got a conversation on. It's, well, how can we get a little more efficient here? Because there's some thought that maybe locally, we can do a little bit better for ourselves. So, that's something that we're going to be looking at going forward as that expense has grown tremendously over the last year and a half. Addition to restrictions are currently projected to be under budget by $144K. But the Special Education Department has managed to bring back several students since the last time they did an update. And this has significantly reduced the expense. So, it's going really well there. And we've taken some of that savings and we've rolled it into the purchase order for RIDE to help offset some of that increased transportation cost. And finally, electricity is currently projected to be $152,000 over budget. Still too early to really get hung up on that as the winter, really, the next two to three months bills are really going to be what makes or breaks us on that line. But that's something that we'll keep an eye on as we go forward. We still have a $1 million transfer in from fund balance to cover us and to create a balanced budget or a balanced projection for this year. Really, since we last did an update in September, there's really not been a lot of movement on these numbers. They've stayed pretty consistent throughout the last couple of months. And we're still on pace for a small surplus of well over $12,000 once we make that transfer.
Is there another transfer of $300,000, I see, for indirect costs?
Yeah, that's slated this time and we made it the end of the year. That's money that the indirect costs help cover. They're transferred in from grants. And they help cover local employees who work on grants. And that's the way the grant reimbursing.
And I assume there is no indication at this time that RIDE would be giving us more funding? The state would not be giving us any more funding than what was shown here?
Oh, for fiscal year '19? No, these numbers are set. This is...
This point.
Yeah.
There's always some surprises, it seems, once we get to the end of the fiscal year.
I don't think you're going to have any surprises.
There is the rates. You know, it's the point on any account. There you go. We had some money.
Yeah.
You're not expecting any A's.
No, not from that line. Certainly not.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, comments?
Mr. Perrier. I mean, Jim.
Mr. Perrier, step one number again. A projected surplus right now, $12,000.
Correct.
That's it?
Well, it's, yeah, that's it. Did you want more?
Yes, I did.
Well, it's actually, we have a fund balance transfer in. So, it's actually, it's not even that, quite frankly.
It's actually $188,000 deficit.
And during the contract negotiations, I do just want to kind of put it out there that we were anticipating eating into our fund balance. And this is not something that surprised me. This is something that we've been preparing for. We knew we had contract negotiations. It took us 15 months. We finally got it done. But we knew that we were going to have to dip into our fund balance to get this contract done. And this is what you're seeing right here.
Hopefully, if some of the anticipated medical expenditures and other expenditures become lower than we project, then we won't have to dip into our reserve as much.
We did get some preliminary FY '21 numbers from the state. And they do look promising at the time. At this time, it looks like we will be picking up a little bit more from the state '21. But it's far, far too early, like, to get hung up on that. So, we're going to keep our eyes on the road and continue to manage the best we can and do the best we can with the dollars we have.
Well, anyway, the dip into the reserves appears to be less than what we had anticipated when we were sitting in negotiation. Much less.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. We are having to go into the surplus quite as much as we had. So, we're ahead on that portion. But we weren't anticipating doing this, so.
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Perrier, your job is usual.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we'll get into new business. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of a technology specialist. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We need a second.
Second.
Dave, go, Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to recommend Mr. Adam Aruda as technology specialist for the Woodsocket Education Department. Most recently, Mr. Aruda worked for InMusic Brands as the technical support specialist, as well as expressions and Kodak Behavioral Healthcare. Adam is a Rhode Island college graduate, holds a bachelor's degree in computer information systems. Based on his past experience, I recommend Mr. Adam Aruda as a technology specialist for the Woodsocket Education Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any comments? Vice Chair Burke.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just a question. Is this a new position or are we filling an empty position?
We are filling an empty budgeted vacant position.
So, two empty budgets?
Correct.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Capescus.
Yes.
Thank you. Wait and see here. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the appointment of a technology specialist. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to recommend Mrs. Linda Tracy as a technology specialist for the Woodsocket Education Department. Mrs. Tracy has worked for the Woodsocket Education Department, first as a substitute and then a Medicaid IEP specialist for the past two years. During this time, she worked diligently to organize and coordinate support for both faculty, staff, and students needing technology and facilities assistance. Her organizational skills are exceptional. And during her tenure as Medicaid IEP specialist, she was instrumental in streamlining our data entry process for state reporting. Meeting critical deadlines is not an easy task in a district the size of Woodsocket. And Linda has handled all requests with ease. Mrs. Tracy will be an outstanding technology specialist for the Woodsocket Education Department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. I know Mrs. Tracy from work that we do at the Knights of Columbus. And I will be recusing myself in this role because it's a personal relationship. And so, we will proceed with that. Is there anyone else or any comments? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche.
Stand.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Capescus.
Yes.
Mrs. Tracy, please stand and be recognized. Congratulations.
Can you give Medicaid IEP numbers?
Yes.
Should we do both?
No, but not too long.
Next, I will make a motion to discuss and approve bid number 20-07 Utility Trailer. Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you is a bid that the Woodsocket Education Department did for a utility trailer for the district. We received two bids with Easy Dumpster and trailers being the lowest bidder.
Mr. Perrier, what is going to go in this utility trailer? Is it going to be the thermostats that is building?
You'll have to talk to the, this guy right to my left right here. This guy right here.
Any thoughts about the trailer? Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
See it on my face. Well, I just want to make a comment. I mean, obviously, we've got four purchases we're going to talk about tonight. And we just talked about the surplus right now of $12,000. And to add up those four purchases, which I did, then it comes to $102,000. So, I guess my question is going to be on all these things. Which did he, where's the cover from and how are we going to pay for them?
The two larger items here, the bus and the Honda Odyssey, they're going to be both paid out of categorical funds. That amounts to about $90,000, a little over $90,000. Worth of these purchases are not going to be affected by that fiscal update that you, that I just presented to you. It's going to be handled through categorical funds. That's money that we have set aside for our career in tech center. We get that through the state and it's spread down to the state. And it's basically a grant. So, those two items are not going to have any effect on our $12,000.
What's part of our two points of view, Dr. McGee?
No, this is actually a yearly grant that we receive from the state that's given directly to the career in tech and allowed for all kinds of different kinds of purchases, anything to improve the programming. And these are going to help with students getting around in the district, going to work job sites and getting real work opportunities. So, again, no impact on the general fund for either of those two. The $32,000 for the Honda Odyssey and the $57,000 for the bus.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that.
What about the other funds?
The other two, we do have additional funding for these through our building improvements and our capital improvements that we'll be able to utilize if we get in trouble down the road.
Vice Chair Burke, one second. Anyone else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Porche.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Capescus.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 20-08 multi-function school activity bus with wheelchair lift. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier.
Yes, this is the bid for the bus and the wheelchair lift. Again, this is categorical funding, no impact on the general fund. For this bid, we received three bids, actually. The lowest being New England Transit Sales at $57,849.
Mr. Chairman. Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. How have you dealt with this in the past? With the students that are the wheelchair transporters?
Quite frankly, Mr. Chairman, we, Mr. Vice Chairman, we've never had money. We've never really looked at this in quite some time. The career in tech does have some very old vehicles. And there are vehicles that we're looking to upgrade. And that's where this categorical dollars came in this year. Is we took the money from, we took the budget of money and applied it towards upgrading these vehicles. And again, because really for the career in tech, getting out of the community and getting that real-world experience is crucial to part of the education process. So, this is something that we prioritize this year. Mr. Webb, while working with Mr. Webb on putting the grant together or developing the budget, and this is where we landed.
But this particular vehicle, it's for wheelchair access.
Correct?
Excuse me? This has a wheelchair lift to it?
Yes, it does.
So, they would model the high schools?
What's that? Right down the model of high school?
They would model the high school as two vans, one of those handicapped accessible. They would use that when they needed to accommodate a student that was handicapped in a wheelchair. Career tech center used high school van. Now, they would have their own at their disposal as necessary, which is a much better situation. We're trying to coordinate between competing, not competing programs, but two different programs that might be running some issues at the same time.
Just to clarify, so we'll have three of these vans now in the education department?
We will have three of them, yes. But we'll have two of them. The third one, I'm not sure if we'll be able to keep in operation much longer.
The third one, I'm not sure if we'll be able to keep in operation much longer. It's one of those old ones.
Well, both two, but you mentioned one of them to die in.
Correct.
Okay. So there is a real need for it, rather than we have the money so we can spend it?
Oh, absolutely.
That's all I want to hear.
There's some, there's some significant repairs down to that van. Luckily, we have automotive students who actually managed to keep this van on the road much longer than, I mean, I'm not, I'm not safety issue, I don't want anybody to think that, but they've done a great job keeping that van running, and it's time to be replaced. I, I would speak to the fact that moving forward, we're looking at van purchases in general here in the district, that we always look to opt to buy a handicapped accessible van if we can afford to, just because of the fact that that's just the right move to make in terms of being prepared and having some foresight in terms of how we're going to do things in terms of van purchases. Why buy a van if it doesn't have the accessibility we need down the road? So if we've got the state money, it's not our money, I think it's a good purchase to move forward having that flexibility built in. And I would propose moving forward all the vans that we purchased, the smaller type vans such as these, not a school bus, but small type vans that we do look to that handicapped option, it just definitely makes sense.
But I agree with Vice Chair Burke. It's not the availability of the money that should spare this, this purchase, it should be the need that we need, we have to have this. One of the vans is really under disrepair, ready to die, and thank God our students got A's in their courses in terms of motor repair so that we can afford it. But it's, it's not the fact we've got the rent money to buy it, it's we've got the need, and then we've got the rent money to buy it.
We're not making a purchase because, oh, we have the money, it's available, let's do it. It's, there's a need, this purchase is the need, it's.
Please, I, I bring this up not for criticism, but I think we needed the conversation. I think we need an explanation on the reason why some of these things, I mean, purchases, because these are pretty hefty purchases. So, thank you, Kirk.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiskas?
Yes.
Next, would you be interested? I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 20-10 for an in-bed anti-ice system. Is there a second?
Second.
I did?
Oh, not.
Oh, yes, I did. I'll go back, oh, no. We're on 20-9.
You're so excited.
I'm so excited about the ice. Is there a second? You've got a second?
Second.
Oh, yeah. That's correct. Well, let's have a motion to take bid 20-10 out of water. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're on 20-10. Mr. Perrier, talk to us about the anti-ice system.
I'd defer to Mr. Tori on this one.
Well, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, this, the other term for this would be the brine truck. This is a, this, this, this piece of equipment will allow us to pre-treat the parking lots and roadways around our schools before the winter weather hits, which recently here at the Mill School, there was a function in the evening that had the brine, I think the parking lot would have been in better shape versus trying to treat with sand and rock salt. So this is a pre-treatment option. This is something that currently the city of Woodsocket does to all of their roadways before storm hits, and what we generally do is we have to reach out to the city and ask them when they're done, be able to, when they're done treating with the city roads, if they have time to come treat some of our parking lots. We've worked very well with them in the past, but this would allow us to be able to do it during our timeline versus having to rely on the city. It's a quite a large city, and they've got, where they'll work through themselves. So this would allow them to be able to take an existing truck and outfit with the in-bed anti-ice system.
Let me ask you, is this going to be used for all schools?
Yes.
Are you going to have time, one truck?
One truck.
They're going to do this at night?
Yes.
You know, you say the storm is coming, so they're going to?
Yes.
I don't see, doesn't the city have a lot, quite a few of these trucks?
I'm, I'm not sure how many the city has, can you speak to?
Just saying, because they cover the roads, so we've got 12 buildings?
Yes, so one truck will, will cover ours with the one truck, and then we have two trucks that run the sand and salt operation, which we also treat the parking lots with. So between those three vehicles, we'll be treating with both the brine solution that we'll be purchasing for the city, along with the rock salt that we purchased for the city to treat all of our lots before storms. We'll then be following the trucks that we have in existence, and then we will be, this will not be operation at the cleanup side of it, but we'll be treating again with the rock salt again in the storm. So this completes the full circle in terms of how we would treat a, we'll just go up there and put school runs inside.
Have we not treated, we have treated, we have laid out sand and rock salt for the buildings at this point, and what makes this anti-ice system so great? Why do you think we really need that, other than it will help or it will lessen the time it takes to cover the lots? Because we're not, we're not going to do everything by?
Well, we're going to attempt to do everything by, yes. So we currently, right now, when the storm is approaching, we currently pre-treat our lives with the sand and salt mix.
Sure.
It's not as effective, from my conversation with the public over the worst of things, you know, it's not as effective as when we brine. That's one of the things that we're changing in terms of our operation, and then the second one, which we'll be exploring in the very near future, is changing over from sand and salt mixes into just the salt mix to melt down any of the ice that you see yesterday, this morning, and again this evening. So those are the two changes that we're supposed to get, which can explain to me a much superior result to how our property looks during these storms in terms of, you know, versus what we're getting now. So this is, should be a preventative measure to prevent things from sticking and accumulating as quickly as it does. We're still going to have to follow, just like every other major roadway, it's just this is supposed to be a much better system in place than what we're getting now.
Anyone?
Of course, Mr. Chairman. The brine, you saying we purchase it from the city?
Well, we reimburse the city for whatever they, they, they are charged.
But they made it though, the city, Woodsocket makes it?
Yeah, that was, of course, they made it yesterday.
But they used to help us with our parking lots. Did we pay them?
Yes, no, no, yes, we did. We tried to pay them several times for when the big cats came down to move snow out of our parking lots, yes. Not recently, but historically, yes, we've been charged for that before.
So when they were able to bring the brine to our parking lots, you did, you paid the city for that?
So I stand corrected, I, so we, so I've done requests, they have done brine to the parking lots in our requests since, since I assume the position here, and then she can help us out.
But when they did, we paid.
Paid, yeah.
Maybe it's given to us.
She doesn't, she has a budget. Any, anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiskas?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid number 20-09 Honda Odyssey X. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the final bid for the night here. This is a Honda Odyssey EX. Again, categorical funds replacing the van really on its last legs right now. I don't think we're going to be able to continue to keep that on the road, but we only received one bid here, 3271.
Are you, are you sure? Vice Chair Burke?
Because I, I remember we purchased the van not that long ago, that the career, I mean, that the Colonnade we use is quite a bit. But there was a second van that now is no longer on its last legs.
Yeah.
And that's replacing that. And I had to stay where the money's coming from, just trying to think of.
Yep. No, you, you, you're correct, Mr. Vice Chair.
I just think so.
But that one's been around.
No, I thought it was fairly recent we bought that one from the Colonnade. Or they use it, but it's.
At least. Off the top of my head, it was a few years ago, at the very least, I think it was three.
You might have the one, that's the one that's on its last legs?
No, no, it was another one. It's a much older one that's on its last legs. That one actually replaced another one on its last legs. So we're not replacing that recent purchase, no, no, absolutely not. We don't, we don't work on that hard.
Okay, again, I'm not criticizing, but again, I think we have that conversation.
You?
Why?
Vice Chair Burke, you have the right to ask all the questions you'd like, and it clarifies, they, they, an argument, I never talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like, to be honest with my head, you will be the song, tell me why?
Would you like to sing?
I don't think anybody knew that song. If you want, you just give us. Mr. Perrier and Al have no idea what that song is.
They might.
No, I don't know, yeah.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiskas?
Yes.
It looks like we have another bid, Mr. Perrier. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve bid 20-11 Strategic Planning Services. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perrier?
So the district actually put together a bid for strategic planning services, I was due in today. We didn't receive any bids by 10 o'clock cutoff, but after 10 o'clock, bids did become, did come in. And I think because yesterday was the big snow day, I think unfortunately, those bids weren't able to make it to us before the 10 o'clock cutoff on this morning. As these bids came in a little bit later, I think we're going to take a look at what we have there, because I think it's a priority of the superintendent to have a strategic plan put together. This is something that we are going to want to take a look at, and we're going to take a look at these bids that came in. And because nobody bidded, and there was no bids as of 10 o'clock, I don't have anything to share with you. Per the charter, we now are able to go out and take, take a look at individual people and then solicit bids on our own. I think the starting point will be the two bids that we received after the 10 o'clock cutoff, we're going to be able to take a look at them. So as we have some time to actually look at those, we're going to figure out what we're going to want to do going forward, as I have a chance to sit down and superintend a discussion.
Next, someone to table, is there a second on the table?
Second.
Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiskas?
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the WSC School Committee Resolution Implementation of Solar Panels. We do have, we're being a packet, a copy of the resolution that hopefully we will approve. Just a quick background, as we know, the city is working to implement solar panels throughout the city, and they've identified a contract of re-management, and they have begun identifying locations for the solar panels. And as we know, that some of their locations may have to be approved by the state. However, one of the items in the resolution, they would have liked to see the council that is, is for the school committee to issue a resolution supporting the installation of solar panels on, on properties that are managed, controlled by the school committee. In addition, they were looking to, look to see if they, we could build, or they would build through grants, a carport as has been done in other areas of the country. A carport on top of which solar panels would be installed. This carport will be installed at the, in the Woodsocket High parking lot, near the Harissa. One of the benefits of that is that we would get a new parking lot, plus we would get the carport, and to be able to draw off some of the savings on the electrical. But one of the resolutions, as has been drafted, is I don't believe we should approve the installation of solar panels on the buildings, existing buildings that we own, that we manage, especially the roofs or any other location of those properties, as well as any of the fields that we control and manage. Notably in Barry Fields, notably the Park in Vernon, notably we have the land between the middle schools. So the only thing I'd like to see if we pass is a resolution to support the solar panel project at the installation of the carport and at the Woodsocket High parking facility at the Woodsocket High parking lot. That's basically the resolution, and hopefully you all had a chance to look at that. Any comments?
Yeah, of course, I guess I'll say.
Of course.
I did read this, Mr. Chairman, and I can agree wholeheartedly that we do not want any, any solar panels placed on our existing property. I agree with that wholeheartedly. I also do not think we should be putting solar panels around a school with carports. I know some school in Massachusetts, I know you just did this, but you know, I, I, I just, I, I can't approve that part.
Why not?
Because solar panels should not be placed around the school. There's still some studies out discussing some aspects of the solar panels, and then we haven't completely studied the effect of all this solar, about the solar energy. But I don't think it should be around the school.
I know the city council has done, that question was asked of the city council in terms of what are the risks of implementing solar panels regarding health, and that study has been done by the council, and the results of that study was there is no problem. So I don't see it, and other school districts have, have done it, there has been no problem, and so I think it's just a benefit in many ways, not only to the school department, but to the community at large. But other comments, please?
Sure.
Would the city then maintain essentially ownership, never mind, I already read it, it's in there, of, of the overall maintenance of the, the actual carport itself when it's saved?
Yes, yes, they would. Mrs. Nato? Mrs. Kepiskas, any thoughts?
Well, I thought, is what I previously expressed to you when we talked about the solar panels, was I, I don't necessarily disagree with the installation of a carport at the high school. We were talking about an elementary school, I think that's attractive usage, and some little kids trying to get to the solar panels to play with them, because they're intriguing. I don't, I think that wouldn't happen at the high school, and I would certainly hope that schools about, wouldn't be responsible for repairing any damages that might occur at the high school as a result of vandalism, because that certainly means park break. But with regard, as I read the resolution, I thought what I was reading was essentially, we'll agree to run on the carport, or we're not going to agree on any existing buildings or existing fields. And I thought, that's how I read the resolution was, we want to make it clear, you're not putting solar shields on the top of the middle school, we already have to hire people to come and shovel it because there's too much snow.
You're absolutely right, that's exactly how the resolution reads.
And that was my understanding of it. It was, it wasn't to dictate where they're going to go, it's to dictate whether or not.
Correct. We're limiting, we would limit, our resolution limits the installation of those solar panels only to the carport.
A structure that's designed and built to withstand that wave.
Correct. Anyone else? Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bojette?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
No.
Mrs. Capwell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiskas?
Yes.
Next. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the revisions to the parent involvement policy. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kepiskas?
This is a good cleanup work, though. The parent involvement policy came before us in the late spring, and there were some recommended changes to take reference to the PACT Parent Advisory Council out of there. Because essentially what's happened is the parent advisory council is the two leaders who are in charge, both had students who graduated, they know who has students in district, the person we had hoped was going to step up and take over would be out of district, and as a result, we don't currently have an active PACT, where we still do have provision for And as a result, we don't currently have an active PACT, where we still do have provision for PACT, bylaws for PACT, and hopefully at some point, we can find parent, parent or parents who are willing to go running the PACT. And as a result, I was opposed, as were some other members, to the removal of any references to the PACT from a parent involvement policy. PACT was always instrumentally enveloping the parent involvement policy, reviewing it, passing on it, and I just didn't wanna see that come out. So, as a result, uh, we asked that the, uh, people who presented the parent involvement policy, the PACT removed, or PACT back in. The draft that we have has the comments that shows the PACT going back in. Uh, so essentially, we're just looking to approve an already existing, pretty much, parent involvement policy, that PACT had been taken out of, and now PACT's been put back in. So, it's just a little bit of cleanup work over the housekeeping.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, uh, Mrs. Kepiscus, um, so we are approving the red that's back in there now.
Correct.
Even though these lines go, and we are, and we are taking out the red green.
I don't have a color on mine, so...
It's still, it's still in a form that we, we saw originally.
It's exactly the same form that we saw with the PACT going back in, we just never formally voted on it.
Correct.
For whatever reason, I don't remember, but that's what we're voting on, putting the PACT back in, taking out any pollution on the PACT.
Okay, so, so anything that was, um, stricken in red is going back in?
Right. Change of the year, is that sort of thing, that's all that, that work.
Any other comments, thoughts? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Next, we'll have a discussion on the policy review process and the creation of a policy handbook. This is just a discussion, no motion necessary. Mrs. Kepiscus, if you would, move that discussion.
Essentially, what had happened is they indicated, we had meeting in December, December eleventh. Um, it wasn't formally a policy subcommittee meeting, but I was asked to attend as chair of the policy subcommittee. Dr. McGee was there, Dr. Cooper was there, Mrs. Mariani, um, Dr. Sullivan, Lo Morrell, Sarah Port, and Carolyn Tivo by phone. Uh, and we basically discussed, you know, policies that we need, and I mentioned what those policies are. We haven't had, as, as I indicated to Chairman Bourget, I didn't know as policy subcommittee chair, what my responsibilities were. Was it to draft policies, or was it to ask the policies we drafted, is it my job to review the policy handbook? Didn't really know where we were. Part of this discussion was to make that determination as to where that leadership was gonna come from.
Right.
And it's gonna come from legal, they're going to recommend the policies that we need to be looking at, to be adding, utilizing, that sort of thing. And that they would be drafting those policies. The issue kind of arose out of homeschooling policy, which we kind of started to discuss when Joe Cooper was here, and then it kind of languished. And I finally just threw together a policy myself, uh, because I just wanted us to move something out of committee. Nothing had been moved down since the transgender policy. So, essentially, we discussed the procedure as to how that's gonna work, we're gonna discuss those policies, uh, the little, our legal team is gonna present us with draft policies, which we'll be able to review, so that we can have a meaningful discussion at policy subcommittee, and these draft policies that are already before us, instead of looking at South Kingston's and strategies and Providence's and trying to cobble something together. Um, essentially, that work will be done for us. And with the intention to eventually have a completed, updated, um, policy handbook, which we, we have the policy handbook. But some of those policies were approved without our original subcommittee, some of them were added without actually getting school committee approval. Um, and we just need to clean up our act regarding those policies. And I believe that's what the intention of, of that meeting was to discuss, the process has to go, and then be out there. Um, because this committee's sitting for at least another year, um, and for the last few years, there really wasn't an active policy set. We were just gonna get that moving forward. And I personally mean in some direction as to how it was to be done, because they've never been on it. We didn't really have an active policy subcommittee to give any guidance. So, that's part of what we discussed.
It's, it's a great start, I mean, it just breaks the ice, because like you said, what in the world should we be doing? What should we be putting in a handbook? What policies do we really need? Because oftentimes, Sarah, you would say, well, we don't have a policy on this, that, and the other thing, and we need to make sure that we have all the policies that we should have, and the policies we believe we should be need. So, I think it's a great discussion.
So, Joe Cooper, we, we began this conversation...
Sarah, would you please speak with him?
I'm sorry. We, we began this conversation some years ago, and I, I know Joe Cooper had drafted a list of policies that you must have, which I know he shared with the superintendent at some point, because it became part of the evaluation, us, it, it became part of the superintendent's evaluation. And we can rekindle that document and put it back in front of this newer committee, so that we're clear on what we must have and what is more discretionary. But if what you're saying is you'd like legal to take the initiative of sort of directing you with respect to policies, that's fine. It hasn't historically been our understanding that you were to sort of feed that to you, but rather advise once you've decided on how you wanted to revise the existing policies.
So, I remember Joe Cooper had, we were talking about policies some years ago, and he drafted policy, you may have had your hand in it, but I remember he presented it, and that's the last policy we saw. So, oftentimes, if you have a list of the policies we should have, well, do we have one? If the answer is no, then we should have that draft we brought to the subcommittees, and, and we send them one that we're talking about. Uh, Mrs. Kepiscus, mentioning about four or five policies that we will need to act, that's probably on your list as well. So, we would want to definitely have that presented to the subcommittee, and then come to the full committee for approval.
I, I will certainly go back and, and dig out that document, which looked at the current state of our national law, and, um, make sure that we're working in tandem on what we need to update.
Good, okay. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss the district organizational chart. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so you have in your packet a chart, um, it is the Wensacke Education Department Organizational Chart. This chart reflects, um, some subtractions and additions to, uh, central office positions. Uh, as the committee knows, uh, we no longer have an assistant superintendent, um, position in the district, and that was, uh, replaced with, um, the, um, position of, um, Curriculum Development, Director of Curriculum Development. So, this organizational chart reflects those modifications. So, if you, uh, start from the top, you have the Wensacke School Committee. Um, the Wensacke School, uh, School Committee clerk, Ms. Blais, um, would report, um, to Wensacke School Committee as, as its clerk. Superintendent reports directly to the Wensacke School Committee, and the administrative assistant is, is also Ms. Blais, who reports to me. Uh, below Superintendent, we have all of the directors, beginning with the Director of Administration and Finance, Chief Operating Officer, Director of Resources and Labor Relations. To the right, the Director of Curriculum Development, Director of Special Education, and the Director of Literacy and Title I. So, those positions that are on the right of that chart would be curriculum positions. Positions to the, to the left would be more operational positions in the district. If you go down below that level, then you would have all of the principals, um, we have the Wensacke High School, Wensacke Area Career Technical Center principal and director, the Hamlet Middle School principal, the Manova Middle School principal, each of the elementary principals, and we also added our English Language Learners Coordinator, who is, uh, Mrs. B. So, all of those positions will report directly to the superintendent.
Thoughts, comments?
If, if I could add also, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
We're in the process of, of creating a, um, an organizational chart for each department as well. Because, you know, as, as the committee knows, uh, each, each of these departments are, are not just solo, uh, departments. There's not just one person to lead, there, there are people that report to the directors, um, even though they're not part of this, this organizational chart. So, we will actually be, uh, we're working on that, and we'll be presenting that to the committee at a later date. And, and I think it's, it's good, because it gives the committee a sense of, of all of those positions in the district, and who they report to, and who's responsible for them.
Anyone? Dr. McGee?
I have one question. Um, in particular, I have a question in familiarity of this department, it says Director of Special Education. I just wanna make sure that in improving this organizational chart, we're not eliminating positions that aren't in the game here. The Assistant Special Education Director, which has been vacant for many, many years, uh, but it's still part of the organizational chart. We're not eliminating...
No, we're not, and, and, um, when, when we come to the committee, probably in January, that's gonna be reflected in that. So, so the Special Education Department will have its organizational chart, so that it'll, it'll be found in there. Mrs. Kepiscus.
Just wanna make sure.
Yes. Yes.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Before we adjourn, I just wanna take this opportunity to wish all of you here, and all your families and friends, wonderful holidays and a fantastic new year.
Ditto.
Ditto. All ditto's?
All ditto's.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-five.
Motion to return, seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.